Ladies and gentlemen, to the line of the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with the great justice for all.
Normally, we have a moment of silence, but tonight, we have a distinguished guest, Dr. Whitson. If you would, say a blessing for us today?
Sure.
Be blessed.
Father God, we thank you for who you are, the difference that you make in our hearts and our lives. You are God. There's none other besides you. You're worthy of all praise and honor and adoration that we can offer. We come tonight gathered in your name to carry out your business. I pray for wisdom for all of the decision-makers that are in the presence tonight. They have your mind and your heart and everything, your revealed will in every decision that they make. Father, we thank you for our town. We thank you for the wonderful atmosphere of Indian Trail, Lord, the camaraderie, and just the community itself that we sense everywhere we go. Thank you for the friendliness of its people, the welcoming of its people. Thank you for the leadership that you have placed before us. Your word says that you're the one who sets up authorities over us, and I thank you for our town council. May we always honor you in all that we do. In Jesus' name, we pray.
Amen. You may be seated. Thank you so much. I just want you to know about the first prayer we've ever had, other than a moment of silence. Thank you so much, everybody. I'm special. Thank you. All right, that brings us to welcoming and upcoming events. We have a Memorial Day ceremony on Monday, May 29th, from 11:00 a.m. to 12:00. The Indian Trail volunteer post over here joined together as Indian Trail gathers to honor and remember those who paid the ultimate sacrifice.
Got it. Sorry about that.
We have Family Fun Day on Saturday, June 3rd, from 2:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. at Crooked Creek Park. Don't miss this family-friendly event with free carnival rides and kids' activities. A hundred-plus vendors, food trucks, cap the night off with the area's best fireworks show. And may I add, it is an awesome show. I don't know if anybody's ever seen it before, but Family Fun Day is a day to be there. And it lasts about, I'd say, what, 20 minutes? Hayden, is Hayden in here? It's about a 20-minute show. And it's fabulous. And it ends on a day that's fantastic. Also, which is not on my list here, I'd like to say something that we've gotten here in the last couple of weeks. The Union County Community Arts Council gave the town a $10,000 gift, or I guess it was a grant. Is that what it was? A grant. And we've never received that before. And I'd like, Hayden, if you'd get up and just tell us real quick what that's all about and what we're using it for.
Thank you, Mayor Cohen. Yeah, the Community Arts Council had been very Monroe-focused for years and years. They recently underwent a new transition, received a new executive director, reached out and started a relationship. So she let us know of some grant opportunities that they had. We applied and received $10,000, and there was no match or anything. So we're using $1,500 of it at Family Fun Day to bring in the Metro Atlanta Native American Association to provide entertainment, you know, cultural and educational. And then we're spending the $8,500 remaining on the Story Walk out at Crooked Creek Park. If you're familiar, this is something that brings education and nature together. One of the things that we're pretty proud of is we'll have a Braille component. So we believe that this may be the only permanently installed Story Walk out there. We've talked base with several schools of the blind, and they weren't familiar with any others. So again, it's being inclusive. It's providing that belonging for folks in the community. So you could go out, you could read it via your site. Someone who is blind can read it via Braille. Then we'll also have an auditory component as well. So we envision focusing on local authors, you know, different celebrations throughout the year as well, changing the story out on a monthly basis.
Is that it?
That's all.
I appreciate. And this was a gift. This was a grant that no, nobody had to add anything to it. It was just a gift.
Correct.
First time we've ever received that gift, is it not?
Yeah. We continue to explore other grant opportunities as well.
Well, very good. Thank you, Hayden. Thank you for coming up and telling us about it. And congratulations on that grant. That brings us to additions and deletions. I'd like for town manager to get up. I think you want to add something to the agenda.
Also, I'd like to add a word from our IT folks is when you speak, speak into the microphone because we've had some sound issues. So just try to remember that. Make sure your mic is on. Sent you an email earlier this afternoon, or probably around 5:00. I apologize for the late notice, but we did want to make you aware of it. About six weeks ago, we brought to you an idea of paving the Crooked Creek Park gravel parking lot. And we were going to bring you a price back last meeting, but that did not occur. And we have a price for tonight's meeting. It's actually item 9B, which is at $143,000 and some change, I believe. One of the things we realized is that we need to get an approved budget amendment to authorize that work to begin. At the time, we talked about trying to have the paving done by Family Fun Day, which is June 3rd. So we're on a tight timeframe. Of course, any and all paving is subject to weather or anything else. So we wanted to put the budget amendment on the counter tonight to see if y'all would approve it. It would come out of contingency fund. I mentioned that, I think, six weeks ago. And if you will, if you do decide to approve it tonight, add it to the agenda and approve it tonight, then we will call the contractor in the morning. Also, something that we will not be discussing tonight, but I just want to give you a little bit of heads up on, is that our walkie-talkies will be out of service because of changing radio standards. And so there's some purchases we want to do in FY '23, but we'll have a presentation on that at the next meeting. So my request to you is if you would like to add the budget amendment, we would add it as 9C.
Can I get a motion to add that, 9C, from someone?
Can I, Mr. State?
Sure.
Hey, Mike, just to let everyone know that we did reach out to, I believe, four companies, and only Red Clay responded back. So we did try to do our due diligence in trying to get multiple, you know, inquiries to see if they would, what they would bid it out for. I just wanted to say that. So remind everyone, citizen.
I'm glad you did because I forgot to. So thank you for doing that.
Okay, now, can I get a motion?
Go ahead. Okay. Motion to add the budget amendment as 9C to the approved budget amendment. And do we want me to read the whole thing?
Yeah, we'll just add 9C for the budget amendment down there. How's that? All in favor? Unanimous. Very good. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda as amended.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, very good. That brings us to presentations and recognition. Proclamation honoring Pastor Mike Whitson. We have a proclamation here for you, Pastor Mike. I would like to read it. And then after I read it, I'd like for you to come up. And I'd like for council to come down and get our picture made with you. But I'd like to read this first. Whereas Dr. Michael Whitson first arrived at First Baptist Church of Indian Trail on April 1st, 1983, and whereas 39 years later, under Dr. Whitson's leadership, First Baptist Church of Indian Trail has grown in membership from 400 to more than 7,300. And whereas First Baptist Church, under his pastorate, has baptized 7,128 people. And whereas Dr. Whitson founded Metro Atlanta Christian Academy in 1992, which now has a thriving student body of 1,477, is one of the largest private schools in North Carolina. And whereas Preacher Mike, as he is affectionately called, also founded Camera's House of Hope, which provides food, clothing, tutoring, counseling, and encouragement to children affected to parental substance use disorder, who are oftentimes overlooked in our society. And whereas Preacher Mike is celebrating 40 years with First Baptist Church of Indian Trail and has been a blessing to the church and the community. And whereas I, David Cohen, mayor of the town of Indian Trail, join the town council staff and our citizens to extend this expression of respect and congratulations to you on the outstanding achievement. Now therefore, I, David Cohen, mayor of Indian Trail, do hereby proclaim May 28th, 2023, as Pastor Mike Whitson Day. Witness my hand of the official seal of the town of Indian Trail on the 23rd day of May 2023. Pastor, come on up.
In this case, we don't have a screen in the background.
You're always in the middle of it anyway. Come on.
You know, a lot of people start out like a wildfire. Like, it's got fizzled before it finished. Most of the time after it fizzles, you don't ever remember these things that you're prior to that. And I, first of all, I keep it up and have no idea what this was going to say. And I'm humbled by all the remarks. I'm really so undeserving of that. But I'm really grateful to you, and I love serving the town. How many people, how many in the town?
About 43,000. Am I pretty close?
Like, 4,000. When we came here in 1983, 63,000. And it's counting, and now there's 250,000. And the count has changed so dramatically. And I have blessings, and I appreciate the belief that you have in us as a church, the support the community's given to us. But here's what I'd like to ask you. Pray that I'm finished with it. I want to finish. I don't want to be one of those guys that don't make it to the end, with a take or leave their turn and place. And I hope I never disappoint you and let you down. But just thank you, town council, for all that you've done. And First Baptist fans ready to help minister to this community in any way we possibly can. All right?
Thank you.
Pastor Mike, are you speaking to Congress on Thursday?
I am. I am praying in Washington, D.C., Thursday morning.
So if you want to, is it going to be on the website then? Do people want to see?
It's on C-SPAN at 9:00.
9:00. Okay. Thank you. That's great.
Pastor Mike, thank you so much. Thank you for all you do. And thank you for coming tonight. I know you've got some, you know, you've got another appointment when you leave here tonight. So we're very blessed to have you here. And again, thank you so much for all you do and your lovely wife. Because I know behind every good man, there's a good woman. And I know she's been a big help over the years. So thank you both for all you've done.
Thanks.
Okay.
Wouldn't be here today without her.
You know what, Pastor Mike? I walked off with your plaque. I just came back here with it.
I wasn't going to ask, but I'm sorry. I'm not used to having such a difficult conversation. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Tom. All right. That brings us to Old Monroe Pharmacy. It's Glenn here, Glenn Shields, and Rich Miller, the owners.
Rich Miller's here. Glenn's manning down the stationery.
Come on up, Rich. Tell us about it.
All right. I bet everybody's going to this. Good evening. My name's Rich Miller. I'm a pharmacist. I'm proud to be here to present our new business here in Indian Trail called Old Monroe Pharmacy. Old Monroe's a fully functioning retail and compounding pharmacy. We're looking to bring, you know, a small-time thrill for the community. Some of the offers we're looking to bring to the community are going to be curbside pickup, same-day delivery. You know, I'm married with two kids, so I know already can be with juggling things and with medications. For instance, today, we have a mother who needs a medication for her son, and we couldn't get out of the house, so we were able to bring it to her. So like, we're looking to change pharmacy and just bring it back to the basics. We are going to be a compounding pharmacy. What does that mean? So a lot of things are changing now in the pharmacy world with compounding. There's a lot of new standards. We are an up-to-date compounding pharmacy with the USD 800 and 796. What does that mean? That means that now we can compound, have these drugs. We're up to date with Florida pharmacy. We are free for compounding. So that means making medications for kids that aren't available as liquids. A lot of us have furry friends, so a lot of medications we can make them treats, different dosage forms. So we're looking to give people options and also give it at an affordable cost. We also will do medication therapy management, sit down with, you know, elderly people, people who can't navigate the system. Because a lot of times in the healthcare system, we have to be our own advocate right now. So just having that counseling of over-the-counter medications, reviewing their medications. You know, the goal is to get people healthy and get them off their medication, not to make as much money as you can. So that's what we're looking to change. Me and my partner Glenn are also have over 40 years of retail chain pharmacy experience. So we know the ins and outs of the retail community. So we know how the process works. We now do navigate it. You know, we can synchronize prescriptions. We have a lot of services as far as ready to fill notifications. We are a member of the chamber. We have worked with a lot of local churches. We do the summer spectaculars, stuff we're, we sponsor that. We're sponsoring the Sunday High School for their upcoming football season. So we're looking, you know, gain a lot of trust in the community. We've been welcoming the community a lot, and it's been great. And we're looking to, you know, provide vaccination. You know, we can provide food clinics. You can come to wherever needs be and provide those vaccinations. So we're just looking to give people alternatives to the normal, just waiting a long time, and, you know, just gaining the trust and the business of the community. I mean, the last thing we always say to people is we'll do whatever we can to gain their business, just as long as it's free. I appreciate you guys all giving me a chance.
Very good, Rich. We have something here for you.
Yes, I'd like to say something.
Sorry.
Can I say something to you?
Sure, go ahead.
Yes, sir. I guess you're the reason CVS closed. They heard you were coming and ran out of the city, out of town.
I moved to this area in 2004. I graduated from the University of Pittsburgh, and my partner Glenn has graduated from Whittington, actually. We have some family within the area. I worked here when I moved here in '04. So I'm pretty much a South-S southern boy now. So, you know, I just love the area. It's just great.
Any other questions?
Where is the pharmacy located?
The pharmacy is located, you go to where the Dollar General is, we're right next to it over there. It's right next to the dentist's office, they're opening up a rehab ID over there. I'll check it out.
(inaudible).
We have all your, we have all the cabinet stuff we can order if you need. So give us a shot. I ask you to give us a shot. We'll be there. Rich, follow me. And also, there's flyers in the back. Do you get out there about information? Well, thank you. I appreciate it. We're looking forward to it.
Okay, that brings us to Ms. Warner. You're not Ms. Warner. Very good. We're going to introduce the new employees.
Right. I'm going to ask Hayden, Adam, and Brandy.
Yeah, just come on up. And we'll start with Adam, and then Hayden, and then wrap up with Brandy to introduce the employees assigned to their department. I will say, we are very choosy on who we hire here because we only want to hire the best because they represent you. But most importantly, they represent the town citizens. So we want to make sure that the work that they do is second to none.
Hello, hello. I get to introduce the most people tonight out of everybody. So we actually have two, four, five new people in the room tonight in our Public Works Department. So as you all know, over the last couple of years, we've grown our department a little bit. Then we ran through COVID, had a little bit of trouble hiring new people. We've actually, now we are very close to being fully staffed. So we're doing good. So if I call your name, will you just stand up, just wave at council? So first, I've got Luigi. I'm going to turn it around. Luigi. Luigi is on our Buildings and Grounds crew. So they take care of this building and the area outside, the cemetery, a couple of other locations as well. Also on that crew is Nathan. Everybody that I'm introducing has been with us less than six months right now. So Steve. So Steve is on our, what we call our right-of-way crew, our Streets and Drainage crew. So they do all the potholes, the sidewalks, mowing along rights of way, any of that type stuff. Eric. Eric's, I think, our newest employee, right? Eric is on that same crew. And then Jonathan is with us as well. So we stole Jonathan from next door. So.
Do we have some that aren't you?
Yes, I have, geez, Caleb is over, Caleb is on our Parks crew. So he is over, maintains Crooked Creek Park, Chestnut, all of our, some of our out parcels and different things. I think that's it.
Krishan.
Oh, Krishan. Krishan is on our, see, I've got so many new guys. I'm like, he is on our Streets crew as well. So again, sidewalk, streets, mowing, all those type things. All right? Thank you.
He also volunteered firefighting in Wade'sboro.
Correct. We pull people from all over the place. South Carolina, Wade'sboro, Charlotte, anywhere. Come on.
Parks has one new employee, Tabitha. So Tabitha joined our team about two weeks ago. So you'll see her in the building Tuesday through Friday. And then you'll also see her out at the park on Saturday. As you know, one of the big things in Park and Rec is customer service. So we felt there was a need to have, you know, a full-time presence out of the parks. So she, her main job is kind of that first line of customer service. So shelters, dog park, town hall, things of that nature. And there's nothing better to deal with the same person when you're renting a shelter, from phone call to email to actually seeing that person out there. So even though it's been two weeks, she's already, you know, has a lot of great ideas that we've implemented and looking at. So we appreciate the fresh set of eyes. So Tabitha, great. Glad to have you on our team.
Good evening, council and mayor. Planning has one new employee, Jennifer Jackson. She goes by Jen. And just to share a little bit, she is the Administrative Assistant for Planning. And when we do interviews, one of the things that I say is, one of the roles that the Admin Assistant performs is one of the most important roles in all of Planning. Please, please make sure that everyone gets that public notice for that rezoning. And so she's hit the ground running, doing a great job. She's keeping me straight. So that says a lot right there. Mayor, she is a Tar Heel fan. So, but otherwise, we're happy to have her. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Is that everybody?
Let's give Tabitha a hand.
Let's give Tabitha a hand. Now, Tabitha, are you the Cardinal fan?
I'm not a sports fan myself.
Who was the Cardinal fan? Or did I just hear that?
Tar Heels.
The what?
Tar Heel fan.
Tar Heel fan. I thought you said Cardinal. Well, good. That's even better. Very good.
(laughing)
There you go. Yeah, yeah. I was going to say, the Cardinals put a whooping on my Dodgers here the other day. Okay, very good. Welcome, all of you. Thank you for coming tonight. Brings us to the D. Mr. Kramer, you can come back up, please, sir. Grand Marshall selection for the July 4th parade.
This may be the last time you get to see me this evening up here. So just following through what we started last meeting with our Grand Marshall. Last meeting, we presented three names. As a reminder, Olivia Reardon, the VFW Honor Guard, and Dave Cruell from Indian Trail PAC 276 as Grand Marshall nominees. We now come back to you once you've had the opportunity to digest that, have conversations, to award our Grand Marshall. What will happen after this is once that person or person or group is selected, we'll be in touch with them. We'll create a press release. We'll sit down with them and invite them to participate in the 4th of July parade. So I can answer any questions if you have them, but truly the selection is yours.
Do I have any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Olivia Reardon, young lady from the Indian Trail area who's suffered quite a bit with cancer and has actually beat it. And she's gone through a lot of pain and suffering, but she came out of it. And so anyway, she's got to be pretty much a local celebrity in the area. So I'd like to nominate her.
Very good. Can I, can I get a motion to nominate her? Is that Dennis? Do you want to just make a motion? Or did you just do that?
Yeah, I just did that.
Okay, all in favor? It's unanimous. That was easy.
That was easy. We, we'll touch base with Ms. Olivia. And again, congratulations to the other people that were nominated. That does not mean that they aren't deserving. And I'm sure we'll see some of those same names again. Thank you all.
Thank you, Hayden. That brings us up to public comments. I hope everyone has read the rules. By addressing council, you acknowledge you have read the town's public comment rules and will abide by them. I do notice, I just want you to know tonight that we have two public comments. We have our regular public comments, and then we have town budget comments. So if you sign the, just sign up sheet for the regular public comments, and you want to speak, I know, Mr. Schellenkamp, you're on both, so that easily. Peggy, did you want to speak on the regular or the budget?
Uh, regular, I'm guessing.
I'm sorry.
The regular, I'm guessing, that's.
You want to do, okay, okay. Then you're up, if you want to do the regular.
Hi, mayor, town council. See if I can get this right. Can everybody hear me okay? All right. Okay. First, I'd like to thank everyone here in front of me. You all are great for the town of Indian Trail. You've done wonderful things. And I personally appreciate you and everything you do. And I know you care about the town as I do. With that being said, I'd like to bring up a community center again. I think that this would be a wonderful start to a wonderful downtown. I think that bringing families and children from all ages into a community center is going to be a good start. They're going to get used to being in the downtown area. They're going to be used to going there. And when they're done, they can join their families, walk out the door, go shopping, have a few drinks, go out to eat, and just begin to enjoy the city all together. I know at last council, we, you guys talked about council priorities, and I believe number four was the downtown area. And so I think this would be a wonderful start for that. Let's see, what else do I have on there? The community center could have funds from state, county. We could use any kinds of grants that we could get. We could use community funding, like, you know, buy a brick for $50 or whatever, and your name gets on it. There are many ways we can help to bring money to the community center, as well as private pays. Maybe somebody wants a room named after them. So we can do things along this line. And I feel that maybe in the budget, we could think about putting in a little bit of miscellaneous money for electricity, water, things along that line. But then again, at the same time, I think that if we have rooms that we can rent out for parties, graduations, business meetings, pharmacy to come in and invite people to come in and find out things about it, I think that that would be great. I would like to see Indian Trail money being spent in Indian Trail instead of going to Monroe or to Math. Monroe or to Matthews. We could be another Fun Row, that's what they call Monroe. It's Fun Row. Well, we could be that. We have a wonderful downtown, wonderful council. As everybody had said before, we have wonderful citizens, and just great people. I think our family fun day could be every day with a community center. So I wanted to bring to your attention quickly, while I still maybe have some time, I brought this Union book in, and you can see, I have highlighted in yellow, Monroe, 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 and it goes on in that. Play and do, Monroe, Monroe, Monroe. I have a few things circled in red that's Indian Trail, like Extreme Ice, Kate Skate, which is great, but that doesn't suit all ages. Retail, again, Monroe. Here's event facilities, looks like there's about a dozen on there, and probably eight of them are Monroe. One is an Indian Trail, and it mentions the town hall. Is that it?
That's it. Peggy, thank you for.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys, appreciate it. Oh, and these people are here to support me, all these guys. If I could stand up and let them know, they would like a community center as well. Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Come on up, Mr. Schellenkamp.
Mayor and Council, Dan Schellenkamp, Indian Trail resident. I was at the meeting last week. Well, first, I want to encourage folks who are here to stay for the budget discussion, which is coming right up. Very important. Everybody should, should pay attention to the upcoming budget discussion. I was here at the May 9th meeting. Local developer, Mr. Harold, presented a vision or proposal for McLendon Place, and I just wanted to speak about that momentarily with regards to growth. He presented a 30-acre area at the intersection of Fincher Road and Potter Road, and I want council to be aware that all, all surrounding properties are single-family R20 or R40-type zoning designation. I live just, just down, one street further down. And I got to looking around, and, and by the way, I believe Mr. Harold also owns the corner, sorts of horseshoe-shaped property right across the street from Fincher, on that same corner, so kind of both corners. And my concern is always, he proposed 180 townhomes and 6,000, or 16,200 square feet of retail office space, and this is in your, Trina typed up the minutes from, from his talk last week. I have a minute and a half. Three minutes always goes fast when you're up here, but I, but I appreciate my three minutes. I look just down the road, if I, if I continue down Potter Road and come to the traffic circle and turn down Waxaw Indian Trail Road to the, to the very next traffic circle at Beulah Church Road, there's a development going in there called Twin Lakes, half-acre and one-acre lots. One of the homes, I looked on the tax maps, already built out, it's over a million-dollar assessed tax value. The empty lots are $250,000 and $300,000 asking prices, right? And I asked myself, it's 3.2 miles away from, from the property that Mr. Harold spoke about on the 9th, 3.2 miles away, and it just seems like it's a world of difference. Why, why can't we in Indian Trail attract a Twin Lakes-type development? We need to be a healthy community, we need a mix of apartments, townhomes, single-family, small affordable residences, as if there is anything small and affordable these days. We also need the middle, the middle-income and the upper-income families, if we want to have them all going to our schools and our communities, all different income and socioeconomic levels. So I challenge the council, when they look at projects, to just look around us, what is it about that, that area over there that warrants half-acre and one-acre, single-family homes, but we don't seem to have that coming up very often, if at all, in Indian Trail? Just something to consider.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Schellenkamp. That's all of our public comments. That brings us, let's see where we're at now, that brings us to law enforcement. No, wait a minute, council comment, council feedback. Yes, sir.
Since y'all here and a while back, y'all had brought up getting a van, and I was just wondering, Mr. McLam, do we have the van yet, or what's, do we have a timeline?
It's still on order. They're processing making it right now.
Okay, so, okay, so that's into work, so I just wanted y'all to know that, you know, that surplus funds, and, and we're doing a lot with surplus funds on the community, so that's been really a blessing.
Any other comments? Go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, thank you for coming up to speak about the community center. I am a big believer in that idea, a place to belong for Indian Trail. As I mentioned before, once I'm no longer on the council, and I have a little more gray hair, I can probably learn some mahjong y'all can teach me. But I do believe in that. I think it's, it's somewhere where, it's a place for Indian Trail where various things can happen, that it can serve, you know, different ages, different groups, at different times. So it's something that I really do support, and hopefully, the other council members here will make some effort to allow that to happen. But I do agree with you, and I liked your idea about the brick, because as soon as you said that, I pictured, okay, I can probably buy a couple bricks and put my name on that building, you know? It's probably the only way I'll get my name on it, right? But, but thank you, thank you for coming and showing your, lending your support, all of you, to that idea. Appreciate it.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, guys. That brings us up to law enforcement. Captain Hunky?
Mr. Mayor, Council. Put a list before you of last month compared to 2022 month, and we were actually down 10%, which is a change where typically crimes going up around here, but it's, hopefully that's, it's a trend that we just started, and crimes going down. We'll, we'll give credit to the weather or good law enforcement, doesn't matter, we'll just take it how we get it. But I did want to mention one, one incident, that our detectives really did a fantastic job. We had a boat stolen off of Stinson Hardest, and didn't have a whole lot to go on, so again, our detectives did what I call gumshoe work, you know, putting those to the grindstone, and capitalized on the license plate readers. I'm sure you guys seen, everybody's seen them around town, those flock license plate readers. Well, they do more than just license plates, and if you, if you have a guy that wants to really do the work, put the work in, and he started looking in the area for that boat, and that boat popped up, and the vehicle that was pulling it popped up, and he was able to locate that vehicle yesterday. Boat was sitting in the front yard, along with, they had a search warrant, were able to find other stolen goods from our community, and was able to make an arrest on a repeat offender, we'll just call him that. So we appreciate the, the help that y'all give us with the technology such as flock readers and stuff like that, and it is doing a good job here in our community. You guys have any questions for me? Yes, sir.
In regards to Sun Valley High School, you got any updates for us?
I believe two arrests have been made today. They will be, I can't speak much on it, because it's all involving juvenile, that's all protected information. I do know that there is a lot of moving parts involved in that investigation, outside of just Indian Trail, but in Monroe and Wingate as well. I don't know that that's going to be the conclusion. We're letting the SRO do a lot of the legwork, because it is community-based policing when you're, when you're in the actual school that, that, that the incident involved in, but we are moving forward with that investigation.
I have one question. If there's no question, what, if you can tell, answer it, where did you find the boat?
So the boat was attached to a vehicle that was pretty distinct, and we already had a suspect listed on some other thing. And law enforcement's not that hard, I'll be honest with you. It doesn't take rocket scientists to go, you know, if it looks like a duck, talks like a duck, it's probably a duck. So our guys who know these offenders out here in the community could say, I've seen that truck before. And he recognized the truck, he said, well, let me just ride by, I know Johnny, we'll call him Johnny, I know Johnny, he drives a truck, something like that, rolls up there, and then there's that stolen boat sitting in his front yard.
Was it in, was it in Indian Trail or in the area?
Yes.
Of Indian Trail, and it was in his front yard?
Mm-hmm.
Wow.
If, if criminals were genius, I'd be out of a job, so.
I have a quick question.
Yeah.
There was a stolen bike, motorcycle, and there was a gentleman that was hiding in the Annandale area, and I had people ask me if I knew anything about it. Do you know anything about it? If that gentleman is still out on the loose, or did they find him?
You caught me off guard, I don't know that, but I will do some legwork tomorrow and find out that for you, okay?
Spread the word then.
All right, yes.
Dennis?
Don't titles, boats have titles, and don't you have to have the title and ownership in order to get your license on the side of the boat, so you can take out and use it?
Just like a car, but people ride around and stolen cars all day long.
That's right, okay.
Again, if they were geniuses, I'd be out of a job.
Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, guys.
That brings us to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay, this brings us back to our second public hearing. By addressing council, you acknowledge you've read the town's public comments, rules, and will abide by them. This is the budget hearing. Mr. McLaurin, did you want to say anything before we get started, or do you want to save it for after? Or both?
Certainly not both. We've been working on this for about six months. I don't have any additional comments unless y'all want to. I've got a PowerPoint presentation that is about seven slides that hits the high point, proposing to keep the tax rate at 18.5 cents after tonight. You know, staff's work is completed on May 9th, when we gave the presentation. You have a public hearing tonight, and the next scheduled step, unless you choose otherwise, is to approve the budget on June 13th. I've explained the reason we want to approve it at the upper part of June, is so that we have time to change our back office stuff, okay? So if the council would like, I can run through a couple slides, I'll leave it to your discretion.
Council, you want to run through the slides? Yay, this is, yes, and this is no.
All right, we're counting on our IT folks. Don't let me down, Bobby. All right, again, this is a 40,000-foot view. This will be the fourth time we have talked about the budget. You've gotten the details already, you've seen two or three other slide presentations. Remember, we talked about various accounts, our primary account, that these slides deal with is your general operating fund, which covers the day-to-day business of the town from the gas and our cars, to the lights, to the air conditioning, my salary, your stipend, and everything in between. We are recommending that we stay at 18.5 cents. We've talked about the impact of the tax rate and its impact on the sales tax, but we use this example as if you have a house valued at $272,951, your tax bill, your town tax bill would be $504.96. Your county would be whatever rate they end up setting it at. Residential stormwater fee, we recommend that it remain the same, 5310 for impervious surfaces under 2,600 square feet, and 63 for impervious surfaces over 2,600 feet. So some of you folks that live in a big house, you pay a little bit more, $10 more, it's a one-time fee. Commercial rate is certainly calculated differently, because places like Sun Valley, Walmart, Lowe's, they have a bigger impact on the stormwater. These are our major sources of revenue for the general fund, and I want to stress the general fund. The ad valorem tax, you see, the $10,886,250. We base it on a 96% collection rate. We want to be really conservative in our collection, because if we make a mistake, then you'll hear about it from the state of North Carolina, the state treasurer's office. The unrestricted revenue, which is, includes the sales tax, that is our second-leading source of revenue. What they do with sales tax, keep in mind, 50% of the counties distribute it based on the population basis of a town. In Union County and the other 49 counties, they do it on the ad valorem. Think about the slice of a pie, the, the smaller slice you have, the less sales tax you would get. If you look at Monroe, who has a 50-something cent tax rate, and Waxall, which has a 30-something cent tax rate, they're getting more sales tax than we are. We're larger than, than both right now. You've got some other revenue in there, you've got the interest income, I want to touch on that just very briefly. Interest rates have gone up. We have had the COVID, the ARPA funding that we have deposited in some other idle funds, so we have benefited from that. Now, what will be, what we will see moving into the future as we start to make that second payment, on the fire trucks coming up, and the other things that we're spending, you know, the COVID or the reserve revenue on, you'll see that base start to decrease. So you'll see that revenue either stay steady or start to go down. The other thing I will mention about that is, you have, and congratulations to all of you, you have a five-year plan on how you're going to do road resurfacing. You remember, we worked on that last fall, and you have a five-year plan on what you're doing with your capital projects. And we told you that, you know, over the next year or so, we're going to start to pull down on some of that fund balance, because some of that money, particularly in Indian Trail Road Phase 1, is state and federal money, and we have to pay for it upfront, and then start to get reimbursed whenever they decide to reimburse us. You got Parks and Rec, a lot of that is field rentals, shelter rentals, things of that nature. If you look at the Park and Rec activity, I think our shelter rentals have doubled in the last year. Major expenses, again, under the general fund. We have wrapped in Public Works Code Enforcement Economic Development. Keep in mind that when we started this process, we told you we were making a shift this year on how we account for pile bill. Formally, what we have done, and this is what a number of cities have done, is they have allowed a certain portion of their pile bill money to be used to pay for the salaries of those employees who actually work on the road. We made a change this year, because we wanted to be able to have that pile bill money go straight to the road itself, so that's why, that's one of the reasons you see the, the increase that we have. Law enforcement, very important, it's one of your top priorities, and you see the results. You've heard the captain say that the number of calls this year compared to last year is down, and he gave you an example of getting a stolen boat, and I'm sure the boat owner certainly appreciates that. You know, when we went into a new contract for solid waste last August, we knew it was going to be high. We had some settlements on some violations that they had done, and that was paid out over 11 months, so starting, I think, in July, we're going to bear the full bulk of solid waste charges. Engineering, roads, streets, capital projects, so very important, so we got that. Those are just the major ones. You know, I, I call it for what it is, and y'all have done some very good things over the years with your budgeting process, and one of the things that I'm so very proud of about this town is you have your debt service capital reserve account, and what you do is that 18.5 cent, what comes off the top of that automatically without fail is 5 cent. And so what we do is, we put that aside, and what it's used for is to pay our debt service, which we're obligated to do, and then we can apply it to various capital projects. For FY '24, using the 18.5 cent tax rate, we're anticipating almost $3 million, $2,941,000. You see the debt service, our debt that we have is very low. I told you last time, the state law allows you to have up to 8% of your assessed tax value as far as a debt limit. You've got a, you've got a taxes, you've got a tax base of $6.1 billion, so we're very low on the amount of debt that we're paying off, which is good for you, particularly if we went to the debt market today, because of the interest rates are, are higher than they were when we sold the street bonds. Even though we have the AAA rating, we would still pay a higher rate than what we're doing on those bonds. This is how we're using some of the money. You see, Chestnut Parkway, for those of you who are not familiar, is right outside this door here, so once completed, you will have a way to get through town without having to go down Indian Trail Road. Highway 74, path and greenway, goes from Biscuitville all the way to Crooked Creek Park. And then Indian Trail Road Phase 2. Indian Trail Road Phase 2 goes from Gribble to Old Monroe, from Liberty to Highway 74. That, we are still doing design work on that, and in the fall, we should know what that cost is expected to be. Then we've got Chestnut Park Phase 2, which is right across the street. Now, what about stormwater? You see where we're using some stormwater money for the Phase 2 of Chestnut Park. We are also doing a watershed management plan. We brought it to you last year, at this time, it should be done in June, and those projects, we expect to see a list of projects that are needed in the town that we can start to apply that money to. Now, something we will. in the town that we can start to apply that money to. Now, something we will need your guidance on, we have not slated it on the agenda tonight, we will slate it in two weeks, is what we want to do about the surplus funds that became available as a result of ARPA. Another smart move that the council did and the staff was, when the ARPA came down, if you remember, we spent some time talking about all the strings and all of that. Well, we agreed, or you agreed, to let us use those ARPA funds, or what I call Washington dollars, to pay for the sheriff's office contract. And we're doing that for three years. That freed up that surplus revenue that you've been able to put back into the town. This is the estimated revenue that we have left for FY24 and FY25. In two weeks, we're going to remind you of our recommendation on what you may want to do with that money, but we'll need to get your guidance for that. This is a slide that, to kind of recap that, but also talk about some of the commitments that have already been made. You see, for FY24, we have the second payment of the ladder trucks that will be coming in, the three of those. We also plan to upgrade the sheriff's office across the ways, our building that they use for their headquarters, so they don't have to go all the way back and forth to Wingate. And our only FY25 commitment is for a continued upgrade of the sheriff's office facility. You'll see this in two weeks. This is how we recommend you use the remaining ARPA's surplus revenue strategies. You can see that for yourself. Put the money back into the town, but if you wanted to use the interest income, we could then do that to outside agencies. The reason we need some guidance from that in two weeks is because the approach we're going to take on that is that we will send out interested agencies that would like to apply for some of this money through town. We're going to set a time limit instead of having it year-round. And that's all I've got, Mr. Mayor. That's, again, a forty thousand-foot view of the budget.
Thank you, Mr. McLaurin. Any questions? Okay, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. Okay. I think that brings us up to the first person, I think, is Larry Dukes. Larry?
Good evening. My name is Larry Dukes, mayor, town council. I serve as the Indian Trail Planning Board chairman. My current job as a technology manager, I work with budgets quite frequently, up to forty million dollars in total. I've reviewed the budget to some degree. And the problem with any budget, it becomes very big and cumbersome to be able to have anybody understand it, be able to ask questions from it. I will defer that, but as I went through it, I, in the few minutes that I have to make my point, I thought, the thing that was interesting is the opening letter from the town manager mentions the nine priorities that the city or the town of Indian Trail focuses on in their strategic direction. And a, and a budget is really that. It's that, how do you meet your priorities? How do you action those priorities, and how do you pay for them? In the first couple, it means roads and infrastructures, public safety, planning and growth, creating a downtown, high-quality team, partnerships, parks, quality services, and operational needs. So those are pretty long. They're sometimes ambiguous as to what they may mean with just reading the couple of words about them. But this entire budget, like any budget, typically grows from year to year. I'm concerned about the future from an economic standpoint for the town of Indian Trail and for Union County and for our country in a lot of ways. Most companies are cutting back in a lot of ways. And my point in saying this before I get beeped will be that I'm very concerned about if we have a surplus that I understand we have, which is a good thing. The intent should not be able to spend that money just to spend the money. I think it should meet with the nine priorities that have been addressed in a very logical way that benefits all citizens equitably and fairly, to bring in a community center or a community connection, to have our roads and our public safety be able to meet up with our needs as it grows. I think that's the important thing here. And so I just want to stress, you have the responsibility, and you already have gone through that several times of the budget, to review it to the best of your abilities. As our pastor said earlier, to give you the ability to do that to the best of your intentions and to make the right decisions. When I see items in here on things to expand our parks, which I love our parks, I love soccer. I was a college soccer referee for several years in another state. I love soccer, but I don't think that buying a piece of land without a great understanding of what that land is and how it would be created and used, built out, and the total cost before we say, yeah, let's do it. I think those are things that may not be highest on the priority. On my list here, it said, thank you. It said on here, Parks was number seven. Let's try to keep that in mind.
Thank you for, for, for your cut.
I can't finish my sentence?
Well, no. No, I mean, if, go ahead. If you have five seconds, go ahead and finish it.
So I just want to encourage everybody to think about the priorities for the city and how we spend our money. You do represent the residents of the town of Indian Trail, and I ask you to consider that. Thank you.
Mr. Dukes, thank you. David? No. You're, you're, David, come on up. You're next. No, actually, you're fourth.
Dan? David Patagamas, good evening, council. I just want to thank Mike for his and his staff for work on the, on the budget. I'm an outsider here, trying to be an insider. I came here five years ago. And what I'm seeing, and I'd like to read a little something from his report, per council's direction, the focus of this budget is maintaining essential services and funding critical projects to maintain and improve the quality of life in our growing community. My recommended budget was developed with this focus in mind. From what I see in this town, I think that's a fair statement, and I think we're going in that direction. I think, you know, we obviously need to be prudent in our spending and what we do, but I think we need to be prudent and look at making sure we do things for the quality of life in this town with the consensus of the community. And as long as you're doing that, you're on, you're on the right path. A little perspective, my town, Suffolk, Connecticut, I had a house of comparable tax value to the town. My taxes up there in two thousand and eighteen, my last year up there, were fifty-five hundred and twenty-three dollars. My taxes before the revale here between IT and Union County were twenty-three ninety-three. So there was quite a difference and quite a cut I got coming down here. And even though there was an eighty-one percent increase in my taxes through the revale in the following year, I mean, it's, it's not a lot of money, and I shouldn't be saying that, just, you know, money is money to people. But my taxes here went from three seventy-five to six thirty-five. It's certainly at least affordable for me. But I think in general, that as long as, again, you're being prudent, I like what's going on in this town, and I think the good things that you're doing, and we need, again, be physically, fiscally responsible, it seems to me that that's translating into increased property values for all of us. And I think that's a good thing for the town, and that's why I support the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Heather Klaus.
Hey, guys. Everybody knows me. If you don't know me, I'm Heather Klaus. I've been in Indian Trail for over fifteen, sixteen years, but I'm a native to Charlotte, so born and raised here. I'll keep it simple for some of you who probably doesn't like math, but I do love budgets. The one thing that I really want to see is community as a small business representative and a small business that last year gave seventy-five percent to nonprofits. I think that some of the irresponsible spending really needs to be looked at. The one thing that I would love to see, honestly, too, is an amazing community center. That is what we work with as well. I think some of the irresponsible spending on millions, I think even one million can help some of even just our small community who's suffering. To see a budget this large for such a small community that we can help, I think a beautification committee would be amazing so that we can walk in our downtown of Indian Trail. I come to this beautiful town hall, but yet I take two steps out onto the main road. I think it's Blythe. Isn't that where the sheriff? That little area right there could be absolutely beautiful, but yet we're spending it on things that just doesn't matter, but that would matter to a community center. That would matter to me to have my family, my friends, and my small businesses be able to sit on the corner and have a cup of coffee, sit with our sheriff's department and talk. And I have a lot of friends with the sheriff's department. That's another thing. I could take pieces of each section of our budget and add more patrol. I talk to a lot of my patrolmen, and they would love not to be pulled this way or pulled that way and have more patrol. There's so many different avenues that I think we can take on certain pieces of this budget, not to have a soccer field when we have all these other areas to play soccer in. Chestnut is beautiful. You can play soccer right there. But taking and really breaking down that budget and looking at the necessities to keep people coming back to Indian Trail to say, we're, we're a community. We want connectedness. We want growth. I would love to see a small business grant once a year given to small businesses to beautify their, their property, to help other investors that have this property grow and be beautiful, to be able to stay, sit, come, and just be proud of where we are and it not look trashy, be as professional as I can, and that people are wanting to, to stay here because of that connectedness and how beautiful it will look. So that's kind of my touching on that, and I totally agree with you. The one point I do want to make, a soccer field is not all ages. A community center is. A community center can bring the athletics on top of certain things that I don't believe that a field would bring. And I've been a cheerleading coach, soccer coach, and worked with Girls on the Run as well.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me.
Mr. Schellenkamp.
So I have a different perspective on the budget. It's, it's low debt, as we just heard. But what I see are lots of big-ticket items that are going to serve the community for fifteen and thirty-plus years, but we're paying cash for it. In a lot of cases, we're paying cash money for it. We saw at the town manager's, or budget presentation last meeting, that there's eighteen million nine hundred and forty-three thousand and change unassigned fund balance in the bank account. We'll call it nineteen million. And there's a lot of it that's going to be spent over the next two years. I understand that. But how did we get a cash surplus of nineteen million dollars in the bank? Why does the town and you, my elected officials, think that my money is better off in your bank account so that someday, when you decide to do something with it, without asking me about it, you can spend it as cash to, for example, buy three-point-four million dollars a sidewalk, which should serve the community for twenty years? Why do we have to pay cash for it upfront? Why can't my fellow citizens who haven't even moved in yet, why can't they share some of the burden of that sidewalk that they're going to enjoy for fifteen years, twenty, thirty years in the future? Same with a community center. I love the idea of a community center. I love the idea of a fourteen-million-dollar street on Indian Trail. I love the, I love the idea of a multimillion-dollar soccer field. I love, I love all these things, but you have to decide what, what we should finance, what should, what can we pay cash for, and we've got lots of cash laying around. But I contend that regardless of what my colleague Dave said, don't tax me more. I'm not happy with paying more taxes. I think you're, you're overtaxing me. I think the, when the ad valorem taxes went up, I don't think, there's, it's fact and figure, when the ad valorem tax reevaluation occurred in Union County, in the town's budget that ended in two thousand and twenty-two, June, I guess in, in June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, the town took in two-point-seven-five million more dollars than the previous year simply from tax reevaluation. That represented a thirty-five percent increase in the money that came out of our citizens' pockets and went into the town's bank. So that was a tax increase. That was the largest tax increase in town history. Even though the rate stayed the same, when you bring in another two-point-seven-five million dollars, you increase taxes. Last point, because time's running out, twelve-plus million dollars in Washington dollars that have come into the town of Indian Trail, that was relief money for COVID. How much did the citizens of Indian Trail get in relief? Zero. Where is our half a penny or one penny tax break for the twelve-plus million dollars that rolled in? It's great. We're going to spend it for three years on the highest budget item, law enforcement. Give me a rebate.
Dan, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for speaking tonight. And that concludes our, I need a motion to our public hearing. Can I get a motion to close public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
All in favor? Unanimous. I'd like to have council comments, and what I'd kind of like to do, I sit here and went in alphabetical order, and then I said, well, that's pretty close to, so let's start from here and work our way that way, if you liked it. And Todd, would you like to, do you have any comment?
I'd defer him going first then.
Well, you can. You can. Okay, go ahead.
Well, I met with Councilman Barber for the last two weeks over the budget, and I picked the smallest straw, so I got to speak tonight and read the statement, okay? So I'm just going to read this, and without any interruption, then anybody can, you know, whatever, please. "We respect the responsibility of the town manager to formulate and present a proposed budget to the council. Thank you for fulfilling, fulfilling that responsibility. We feel, given the lack of strategic planning sessions, no budget retreat, lack of information provided in advance of workshops, only two workshops, lack of encouraged dialogue and suppressed feedback by asking the whole questions till the end, we think it appropriate to summarize, document, and publicly state our input objections to the proposed budget." This item has been placed, these items have been placed on the agenda. We hereby submit. We approve of the request of the three deputies by the sheriff's department and paying the two grant deputies. We don't think public safety should be compromised. We approve keeping the business development position and not removing it, or putting it in the planning department. We approve two replacement vehicles for Public Works, not a total of three. We object to the five percent COLA increase. Instead, we recommend fifteen hundred dollars for all full-time employees and no raises for council. We recommend allocating two million dollars of the surplus funds for roads such as repaving and two million for the community center. This reflects the top priority of road infrastructure, and as you said, line four of council priorities. We do not approve of the two-hundred-thousand-dollar equipment requests for employees to work remotely. Pandemic's over. We do approve any increase in budget over last year's budget for, we do not approve any increase in budget over last year's budget for human resources, including additional request to increase family healthcare contribution by the town. We only approve the monies for Christmas decorations at town hall, not hiring an outside firm. We object to the hundred-and-seventeen-thousand-dollar grant match for the EV charging station, which exceeded the hundred-thousand-dollar threshold set by council. We suggest no budget amount. We do not agree with the seven-and-a-half million funding for capital project ordinance, concept one for Chestnut Square Park, Phase Two, concept one of putting the soccer field over a stormwater pond, to quote the town's manager, is cost prohibitive. We also feel the potential design of shifting or moving upon is cost prohibitive. The tax rate should be lowered. We suggest seventeen cents per one hundred dollars. The town has a high over six billion dollars, six billion dollars in property values with high increases in ad valorem and sales tax in recent years. The citizens deserve a lower tax burden. We feel our suggestions are respectful of the citizens' tax dollars, protective of their safety, and justified as being good stewards of the people's money. We feel without these changes, we cannot in good conscience approve the proposed budget if we don't make the changes. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dan Burd. Go ahead, Mr. Barber.
Thank you, Mayor. First off, I'd like to thank everyone for the taking the time coming here and listening to the budget. We formulated these adjustments to the budget, and I greatly appreciate the town manager. It's his job to present a budget. It's our job on behalf of the people to agree with that budget or not, and what we feel is one in the best interest of the people. The town is in great financial shape. Everybody has spoken and says that. The great thing about being in financial shape is, is we've got a chart-topping rating. We've got plenty of money in the health, in the, in the general fund we hear, a healthy fund. fund balance. The great thing about that is, is I think it puts us in an excellent position to cut taxes. You know, if we were in bad shape, I'd say, hey, we can't afford to cut taxes. I'd like to see a budget that reduces the tax rate, does more to properly staff our law enforcement, is more aggressive in repairing and repaving town roads and uses surplus dollars towards a community center. I respect the town manager's responsibility. Thank you, but at this point, I can't see myself approving the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Ms. Buhall.
All right, I'm going to be short, sweet and simple, but I also appreciate everyone coming out and saying, you know, your opinions and going through and taking your time to look at the budget. I feel like the budget really does truly address a lot of what the community wants. We do get out and talk to people and really want y'all to come and tell us what you want. Not everyone's going to want a soccer field. It doesn't benefit everyone. I'm not going to a soccer field. However, there is a great demand. If you talk to Hayden, you can hear all the people that we turn away that go to Matthews or go to Charlotte because we need more fields just in general. However, I also agree, we need a community center. I do think that there is a lot in our community. Our community's grown, our population has grown. I feel like we are trying to get there and it does take money to get there. I went to City Vision, which is a bunch of, I guess, elected officials come together and we kind of discuss. I will tell you, they were in shock when I told them our tax rate in Indian Trail. I mean, we all want lower taxes. I live here, I understand. However, I feel like we really are, we are one of the lowest in North Carolina and I feel like we really are, we have a great plan on what to spend that money on and it takes time. We wanted to build a good balance so that we can look. If you look out, a five-year plan to fix our roads, I think that's everyone's number one, if you, what's the pain points in Indian Trail, the roads? So I really do feel like we have worked hard and I think that the manager and the staff has put together something that truly is coming together to really answer all of the things that we want. So, I mean, that's just kind of my take, but I really do appreciate y'all coming in and, you know, the quality of life, the parks is part of that. The community center would be part of that. Just kind of looking at irresponsible spending, you know, I can definitely kind of look and see what we're doing, Heather, but I will say, everybody's needs are a little bit different and we kind of have to look at it as a whole, which means some choices won't satisfy everyone, but we do try to make sure that everyone has something. So that's my comment and I'll give it on to Dennis.
Thank you, Crystal. Dennis?
Yeah, I've lived here all my life and I voted against a lot of things. I voted against the parks. We now have the parks. I voted against the charging stations, you know, it looks like we're going to do the charging stations. But the main thing, there's a lot to credibility and when somebody comes in and complains about the budget and is against the budget, but they came in and they, they wanted, they gave away 4.3 million dollars in fire trucks from our money here in the town and we continue to pay our fire tax fee that to the county that pays for the fire trucks. So we basically took 4.3 million dollars out of our fund and gave it to the county. So we got no, no cut, no break there at all and 4.3 million dollars in fire trucks. We're in an inflationary economy. When we sit up here and we have to be responsible for the town, its financial viability, the services that we give people in the town, we don't know what our garbage contract is going to be. It's, what is it, 3-point something million dollars? You can't get people to ride on the back of a garbage truck. You've got to give them more money. We know we're going to have more increases in our, of our services. Our law enforcement, we've got to take care of them. We've got to have good people with good moral character. Let me tell you, if you don't want one getting up on Stan and helping the DA convict you if you, if you're innocent and you want him to get up there and tell the truth, and to that, you're going to have to pay to have some high moral people. If we hamstring our, our people right now, all of our services here, not knowing what's coming up in the future, and I'm telling you, this economy is as shaky as it was in the 70s. We don't know what we're going to be hit with. If we get through this, and I could see taking a look at lowering the tax rate, but right now with all the unknowns that we have, I think at this point, we need to just leave things as they are, be prudent in what we do and we're not here just to serve one or two people who come in and complain about the, you know, I'm having to pay more taxes. I just got back from the Northeast and let me tell you, those people pay 15, $20,000 a year in property taxes and I sure don't want it to be here like that. But we've got to take care of our infrastructure, we've got to take care of our people and we have to serve 43,000 people in this town, not just two or three people. So that's where I stand.
Mr. McIntyre?
Thank you, Mayor. I may be a little long, so I apologize in advance. The town of Indian Trail has a very low tax rate and the town of Indian Trail has very little debt. As I sit up here, as I was elected to serve the residents, I am not going to incur debt on the residents if we can pay for it in cash. That, we do not, we are not a corporation. This is a town, we do not get a tax break for interest we're paying. So that's one thing I'm not going to do. So that's one. Please, please let me speak. You spoke, I did not interrupt. If you want to interrupt, I'd ask you to leave. Please let me speak.
Cleared my throat.
Thank you. All right. It's election season. It's also the sealy season because, well, my colleague just made a point here. We want to cut taxes for people. We think it should come up to 17 million. Then why did we take 4.3 million dollars and give it to the county? Second thing I want to mention on that, if we have to do a little math, sheriff's contract is 4.2 million this year, which means that we have to pay that 4.2 million. We owe about 2-point, 2-point something million dollars on the fire trucks, which means we are left with about $2 million from the surplus funds that we can use. I don't know how we can fund 2 million in roads and 2 million in the, in the community center. Numbers don't add up. Facts are stubborn things. We have to deal with facts, right? And, you know, I hear people talking, a lot of comments are being made because this is people coming up and not paying attention, but if somebody runs and they talk about corruption. Audit report came out last year, never looked at the actual audit report to find out what the auditor's findings were. The town is in good financial position, but the manager has made it very clear on several occasions that in the next few years, in the next few years, the surplus that we have right now of 19 million dollars is going to be degraded because of the road projects that we have and the timeline for receiving those funds from either the federal government or the state of North Carolina. These are tied to road projects, infrastructure projects. A lot of people in town talk about the roads. I called our town engineer on Monday complaining about a road that we need to address. It's not the town's road, it belongs to the state of North Carolina, but the thing is, he is the person that I call or every resident should call or get in contact with to get that done. We can't go out and fix the roads. We cannot, as a town, go and fix a road that belongs to the state. Mr. Wannit Woods came, came in here talking about a road. We looked into it. We wanted to get it repaired. It wasn't owned by the town. It's owned by the state of North Carolina, the DOT, and therefore they have to fix the road first, which they're in the process of doing. We can't even take over the road. We have to wait for another year before that's done. So there's a lot of rules to this. The town doesn't own as much roads as we intend to. We do have a plan to do that, which is getting them repaired by the state of North Carolina, then we as a group go in. But the thing is, the, the tax rate in the town at 8.5 cents, and I pay those taxes too. My house has almost doubled in value, right? But the thing is, I choose to live in Indian Trail because it is a wonderful place to live. I enjoy living here. Very good community, very lovely people. We have to balance the needs of a lot of people in town. There are some people in town and some people on the council who don't want a community center, but I think that there's a lot of people in town that do support a community center and it would well serve. I remember when the parks were coming up, a lot of people voted against the park, but the majority voted for it. And right now, we have one of the best, best park systems in Union County or in the area. I mean, in the next couple of weeks, you're going to see so many people at the parks. It's not just about one person having a voice or two people. It's about the larger community. 43,000 people with different goals, different ideas, different needs, different wants. And as a group, we try and take that information and get it and put it together, but the thing is, I want people to deal with facts. You have to be honest when you're presenting this, not because there's an election or because you're trying to, you know, bring up some, something. For three years, I've been here, never heard anything about cut, cutting taxes until this year because there's an election. It's not right. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. McIntyre. Just to sum this up, I appreciate everybody's point of view and appreciate what you have to say. I feel like as mayor, I do have to comment on how I feel about it also and these are my comments. We're a AAA rated town. Very few towns in the state of North Carolina are AAA rated. That means we get the highest interest rates on the money that you see in the bank, the 19 million dollars or whatever we have. We have the highest rate. Jim, might I ask what we made this year on, on interest?
Done very well.
Done, done very well on that. And I have another question, if I may ask. On 17 cents, what would that save the average person on a $300,000 house?
It's about $30.
About $30 a year?
Yes.
So if we cut taxes to 17 cents, which is proposed, we're saving a $300,000 house about $30 a year. If you break that down on your monthly bill, 12 going to 30, how many times, let me figure that, a couple of dollars a month. So a couple of dollars a month is, is not going to change, is not going to change the world. It might sound good on an election year that you lower taxes, but a couple of dollars a year. Now, the only person that it might help is if you owned a $10 million house. Then that's where you're really going to save some money because the house is worth more. And then, you know, when our homes go up in value, that's a good thing and that, as Mr. Schellenkamp mentioned, that, that was, that was, I guess, a good part of our tax increase was because of our homes going up and that, that's, that's, that's really what we're, we want. We want our houses to go up. We live in a community that's, that's desirable and that people want, want to live in. I've been up here the longest of anybody. I've been up here almost 12 years and I, I remember when our law enforcement contract was, was over 1.4, 5 million dollars. And that was, of course, that was a long time ago. It's over $4 million now and it's gone up quite a bit the last few years. I know that our solid waste contract has doubled over the last, from one contract to the next. And those are our two highest things that we pay for in our taxes, our law enforcement and solid waste. And I got news for you. Ain't going down. It's only going to go up. It's only going to go up. I also noticed, or I know that the, the state government that we have in North Carolina prides themselves in having over $3 billion in the bank put aside. And what they say, and I've, I've heard our, our congress and, and representatives say, we're ready for anything in the state of North Carolina. We're in better shape than any state in the, in the whole United States. So it's not a bad thing to have money in the bank. We have a catastrophe. North Carolina can help and can take care of itself. So that, it, it's not a bad thing to have money in the bank. 11 years ago, or let me go back, I'll go back 12 years ago, there, I think there was a bond referendum for parks and people voted against a park. I got on council the next year and crazily enough, pushed for two parks and went around and we got two parks. I'm telling you, if you were at any of our parks over time, you're going to see on June, I think it's the third, Family Fun Day, there was no, there was no Family Fun Day 11 years ago. You will have thousands and thousands of people in that park and you're, it'll be, ended with the best fireworks show you'll see anywhere and that's fun. That's fun. I'm glad I live in Indian Trail. Also, Hits After Six, you know, we, we didn't have a park to have Hit, we didn't have bands, but I was at Hits After Six the last two times, there was a, there was a football game going on on the football field. At least 500, 700 people surrounding the field watching the football game. Thousand people watching a band. People playing volleyball. People playing tennis, enjoying the parks. And I know that is one of the biggest, what we talk, I'm assuming it's what, when, when we say that we're, it's a, what we're wasting money on would be the parks. But I will tell you this, we all agreed at one time, everybody on this council did, that we wanted to do the parks. Over time, several kind of dropped off. But I'll tell you this, the, the people, and if I remember right, the parks passed on about a 58, 59% to 41 to 42%. If you went back and asked the 42% of the people that voted against the parks, I bet 30% of them would have changed their mind and said, yes, once I've seen those parks, I'm glad, I'm glad they're here. I'm glad they're here. Because you know what? I know a lot of them and I see them in the parks and I see them at all of these different functions. So it's okay to be, it's okay, guys. It's all right to be, to disagree because we can disagree and, and still move on. But I, I see a lot of good things happening in this town. I'm happy that I live in Indian Trail and I believe in the 18.5 cent rate because it's one of the lowest tax rates anywhere. And not only is it the lowest tax rate anywhere, I don't think we can beat it. We're not asking to raise taxes. We hadn't raised taxes in 11 years and I think that says something. And I think it says something about this council up here. I think it says something and a lot about the, the staff that we have, that you guys have done a marvelous job of directing council or helping council move in the right direction that we do the right things. And that's why we have money. That's why we have a low tax rate. And Jim, when you do, and you add 18.5 cent and you come and tell me how the 18.5 cents is, is where you're at, I believe you because you know what? You've got us to where we are today. It's like you go and you, you win the Super Bowl five years in a row. I'm not going to go back and say, I want to make changes and, and kick some players off the team and lower something. I appreciate what you do. I appreciate what staff does and I just support the 18 and a half cents. And that, that's just all I got to say.
One more thing, please.
Go ahead.
You know, I hear you. The soccer field, you know, we're in difficult economic times right now. You know, I hear, you know, we've got to be careful what we spend. So, you know, we, we want to spend, well, I don't know what it is now, but as concepts change, it's going to be lower or higher. But, you know, if we're going to talk about economic times, that should be squashed. You know, there's no bleachers. How are you going to watch the game? You know? But anyways, that's all I got to say. And oh, one more thing. Fire trucks were approved 4 to 1. They sure were.
All right. Mr. Ann Burdick, you had your time.
I think we did well for the community. They, they support our community, those three fire trucks, the three fire departments. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Appreciate you, that, that comment and.
Can I have to say one more thing, please? Just very quickly.
All right. Make it quick, Mr. Guy.
Okay. Get an amortization book and take a look and put your interest rates that you paid on your house and see how much you paid over a period of time for your house and it'll probably shock you. So cash is king and if you pay cash, you get it for a fraction of what it's going to cost you over an amortization with interest rates involved. So cash is king. You get a better deal anywhere you go with cash and the interest rate will choke you over a period of time. It'll triple what you buy. I just want to throw that in there.
All right, Mr. Guy, thank you. All right. Thank you, thank you all for all, all comments. Thank you for everybody who came up and spoke tonight. Appreciate it. And let's move on. Let me, let me find now where we were in the, on the agenda. That brings us to old business. ARPA update, Mr. McElham. Thank y'all for coming tonight.
Quick ARPA update, couple of things. Councilmember Barber, you brought up the vehicles that have been ordered. So we hope to get delivery of the two vans, one for Park and Rec and one is for Cameron's House of Hope here in the next month or two, is what we're scheduled for right now. So they are actually in production right now, so that's where we're at with those. We are actively working to purchase all the items that have been said that we would purchase through the Rotary or through Common Heart or Food for Families or any of those. Actively, we are purchasing things and working that process through. You'll have on your next budget, another surplus resolution for some more items that are going to be going out the door shortly. You'll have on your next budget, another surplus resolution for some more items that are going to be going out the door shortly. One thing that we have been back and forth on quite frequently is the water lines over in Emerald Woods. So I just talked today to Union County. With everything that is going on down there with the county commissioners, they are kind of on hold for any projects until their new CIP is approved. So what they are telling me from a project manager's side is that they won't make any progress until July. Until after their budget is adopted, they will not move forward on that project. So that's the news that I got today. And I'll answer any questions.
Any questions? Yes.
Based on the Emerald Woods project, the timeline for completion, is it still the same?
Still the same timeline for completion. They're saying that they're about six months behind schedule right now. So originally, they thought that they would end actually early. Now they're on that timeline for when they originally thought.
So they're thinking that they will end in June, January next year?
Yes.
Okay. If there is a delay, sorry, Mr. Mayor, one more thing. If there is a delay, let us be proactive and let the people in that community, maybe we invite them to a meeting to inform them.
Yes, sir.
Just because, being honest, if you, the, the people in that area and the well water, it is an issue for them from a health, just human life health standpoint. So I want to just make sure that we keep them on track, if you don't mind. And at your ARPA, the TV industry, keep us informed. That'd be appreciated. Thank you, sir.
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Very good. Thank you, Adam.
Thank y'all.
Mr. Hunsinger, paving the Crooked Creek parking lot.
Mayor Council, as the town manager spoke to you earlier about this, we came, he came to you asking to see if we could get some bids for this, see what the price would come out to be. So what I did was I sent out an email on May fourth to four contractors, asking for bids back by May sixteenth. Unfortunately, only got one bid back. As Tom mentioned, four contractors, one bid. And that came out to be, as you saw in the memo, one hundred forty-three thousand and some change. And our entry estimate was a hundred forty-seven thousand. So being that it was an informal bid process, we don't have to have three bids. We can go with that one bid. If we feel like it's at, at the number we expect, which obviously it came under. So we feel like we should, as a staff, we feel like we should move forward with this proposal. During that timeframe, and that's why you brought up the, trying to get it paved before Family Fun Day and doing this budget amendment, I wanted to reach out to contractor. Because what I did was I put it in the contract not to get, they had till June thirtieth to get it done. Because obviously, I didn't want to put a tight schedule in there because people won't bet on it, especially asphalt contractors. So I talked to the, the contractor on Monday morning and asked him about it. And he confirmed that he could, he could get out there after the holidays and get it paved before Family Fun Day. So that's the reason why we're trying to push this. Just wanted to let you know. Any questions?
Yes, Mr. McIntyre.
The paving you're going to do is asphalt, not concrete, right?
Correct. Asphalt. Yes.
So you're only, okay. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions? I have a question. I'm just curious. I know the next thing that comes up on the, we got the budget amendment next. If, if we, if the council voted on it, would it be ready, you think, before the parking lot? I guess you wouldn't suggest it if it wouldn't be ready.
Right. We have to get, we have to have the budget amendment to get the PO for it so we can actually legally get the contractor out there. Obviously, things can happen. We are talking about asphalt contractor, and a lot of things can go totally wrong week by week. Trust me. I live with it. I think the only couple of things that may happen is, first of all, it just doesn't happen because they have equipment issues. Maybe they have some pavers down, and they've got other priorities, and they just can't make it that week. Other thing is asphalt plant could just go down that same day they're about to pave it. Again, I don't want to pave it right before Family Fun Day. I want to have a couple of days in between. So if they don't get it paved by Thursday, I don't think we're going to push it and pave it Friday and then have people on there on Saturday. So it's going to be tight. We're going to prep it. Public Works will prep the, the area on that Wednesday, sorry, the Tuesday, coming back after the holidays. We'll try to get the contractor either Wednesday or Thursday. If that don't happen, we're not going to do it. But we, we can't do that schedule unless we have a budget amendment tonight.
Okay. And I guess I don't know if this is a question for you. Is it advantageous to have it for the, is it a better, does it make the, make it better?
Well, I mean, you're used to have, I mean, you're used to having Family Fun Day with the stone out there. I'm just, I just think it'd be a, a better, a better benefit to just have it paved and get it over with. And if the contractor can make that deadline, we're going to try to push them.
Mr. McIntyre, I didn't, I didn't hear what.
I was saying, I think it's better. I think it's better if it's paved, especially for the people there. When you're trying to get through food trucks and stuff, you have little kids, may hit a rock, fall down. I, I think it's better.
Yeah, I mean, you do have loose rock out there. It's not like it's a flat, compacted ABC.
Hunsinger?
Uh huh.
Well, that brings, that brings us down to C, which is the budget amendment.
Well, we need B first, though.
We need to prove it first.
I can make a motion.
Go ahead.
Counsel comments first.
She needs to make a motion. We need to make a motion to either award or deny.
Okay, I got you. I missed that. All right. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion to awarding the contract for, for the paving of Crooked Creek Parking Lot to Red Clay Industries, Inc. in the amount of one hundred and forty-three thousand, eighty-one dollars and ninety-five cents.
All in favor? Unanimous?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of one hundred forty-three thousand, eighty-one dollars and ninety-five cents coming out of contingency funds to cover the cost of paving the Crooked Creek Parking Lot.
All in favor? Unanimous?
All right. Thank you, Mayor Catherine.
All right. So that brings us to, okay, new business. Authorize the transfer of Economic Development Fund, fund balance to be used for economic development. Mr. McLauren.
Lord, I wish you hadn't caught on me. The memo you have in your package doesn't match exactly the request, so I'm embarrassed about it. But I, it's kind of like if you go to work one day and you look, Tom, and you got one brown shoe and one black shoe on. But you just say, I got the wrong pair of shoes on. So what I want to do is I want to explain what we're requesting. We can substitute the memo that was, I was supposed to put in there tomorrow. And you can either vote to approve it, deny it, or defer it to, to the next meeting, June second. We've had some conversations about economic development funds. And right after I came here in 2020, we pitched in with the Indian Trail Town Center and the County Economic Development Department and helped pay for a water line because the water line was good for the community. It would help build, lay the foundation for the downtown that we've heard other folks speak about tonight. So we don't have, and so what we did is we just went to the fund balance, pulled out whatever it was or obligated whatever that was. But we don't have a true economic incentive fund, if you will. Our entire economic development incentive, whatever you care to call it, is contained in the general fund. And so if you recall, what we've talked about is any money in the general fund that is not encumbered by June thirtieth goes into unallocated fund balance. Is that right, Ms. Mathie? I keep getting the term wrong.
Unallocated or unrestricted?
Unrestricted. Thank you. The old term was unallocated. So it just goes back into the, the big pot, if you will. What we wanted to talk to you about tonight for this year that we're getting ready to conclude FY twenty-three is to, if the council is interested in allocating the remaining money that we have in economic development, which I think is right around a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, that on June, on July first, that money will go into fund balance, but it will be restricted to economic development. Is that clear? So that we don't lose that money, but you've got that money set aside in the event that a project comes through that you feel is worthy of using some of that money. Long term, if the council next year sometime wants to look at a longer term vision of starting to create an economic incentive fund, that will give you an opportunity to let it build to a certain amount. Because one day, the county's going to get the sewer thing worked out. You heard Ms. Klaus talk about certain downtown grants or certain business grants to improve their business. You know, we, we don't have an economic incentive policy right now, but it would be nice to have that money reserved so that if something does come. And at the end of the day, y'all are going to make that decision on how to do it, and it will start out in closed session. I'll be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. McIntyre?
Sorry. So that's just me, my opinion, right? Ms. Klaus, is it? Spoke tonight about a small business sort of, some sort of incentive. The, the reason that I, I think that's a good idea, Mike, is, is twofold. We have existing businesses even within the town that have, that did not use any economic incentive dollars to come here. We do need to look at them too as well. Small businesses is the economic engine of, you know, America. The Old Monroe Pharmacy came in tonight, providing compounding, which is a very critical thing right now. That's, that's a needed service. But also, what I, I like that idea in that I don't think the money that we allocate every year and we do not use should just basically go back and just be used for anything. I think we need to sort of put it into its own line item, economic development, and carry it forward. Whether this council now or in the very near future decides to put a cap on that amount, whether you say three hundred, four hundred, five hundred, and therefore you could do that. And as you go down, you draw and you, you put money back. But the thing is, coupled with that, is it, it should be an economic development policy that also takes into account new businesses to entice them. And it has to be tied to, I think when we did the water line, was infrastructure improvement, that type of thing. Or, but also small businesses with certain grants amount and have certain qualifications. I think as we are going, and we want to bring the downtown, we want to bring downtown alive, we do need to really develop that. And I think we need to develop it sooner rather than later. Because right now, it doesn't exist, and nobody will really come to us to entice or for us to be able to entice them to come to downtown. But I think once we develop that, and I don't think it should be a heavy lift, right? But once we develop that, I think that would be an opportunity to bring people in to the down, to the town of Indian Trail. Because they're going to provide a service, pay taxes, and hopefully keep the tax dollars in Indian Trail. That, that's just my opinion, Mayor. Sorry.
I think, Tom.
Mike, did I read it in the budget where we were going to carry that hundred and twenty thousand dollars over to next year to the hundred thousand dollars that we allocate every year?
Well, what, again, the memo does not represent what I'm asking you to do. So just toss the memo.
But that's what we wanted to do, right.
Toss the memo. What we're asking you to do is for FY twenty-three, the year that we're getting ready to wrap up right now, instead of having that, those remaining funds of economic development go into the unrestricted fund balance, what I'll call the big pot, we take that money and we designate it only for economic development.
Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I thought, yeah.
He was talking about the position that you.
No, 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 not the position. I was talking about the hundred and twenty thousand added to, because we, we budgeted this year a hundred thousand. And next year, we were going to add it to the hundred thousand. That's what I thought that meant. That's what I was trying to get across. So it would be two twenty next year.
Yeah, I'm just talking about FY twenty-three for this particular item.
Well, I like the idea of carrying the money over, but the question is, we had the money, we didn't use it. But is that because we didn't have a policy?
We were advertising for a business development director for a large part of the year and just not, could not find the right candidate. We also had some discussions with the county economic development person. And so if you look at a lot of towns, economic development is housed in the planning department. I've spoken to Ms. Dees, and I think she may have some experience in that area. So we would draft it over there. In the FY twenty-four budget, I think there is a hundred thousand dollars for economic incentive. So I guess to get to your, your point, Tom, if you move that FY twenty-three money off to the side here and you have the hundred thousand, then you've got, you know, two hundred and, you know, twenty thousand dollars.
Well, the question was is, do we have a policy where people can apply for the money?
We do not.
Okay, so we would need a policy.
You would.
I mean, we've been budgeting the money, but with no policy, it's no good to have the budget if we don't have a policy for people to use it.
And we've had some discussions with Melanie and Brandy about that. At least as you start to get your feet on the ground in this area, you probably want to look at things on a case by case basis. Now, let me give you, let me give you two examples of where perhaps you might want to consider using this money. One is personal. My wife and I, we own some commercial property in another part of the state. Not very much, but it's right in the center of downtown. They have an MSD, Municipal Service District. So in addition to paying county tax, city tax, I pay the MSD. The Downtown Advisory Committee, they take some of that MSD money, and they have a grant program so that you can apply to the downtown committee and the city for things like painting your building, roofs, things like that. And you pay for it, and they reimburse you fifty percent. Okay? So if you start to paint a six thousand square foot or larger commercial building, you're probably looking at fourteen, sixteen thousand dollars. So that fifty percent comes in pretty handy. The other, the other way you could see this work, and I've seen this before, is that a business wants to come to town, and it would need to be a fairly substantial business, something that, that you feel is right for the town, and they're wanting some incentive money. Then chances are, you could use some of that money to put some infrastructure in so that in the event the, the business, for whatever reason, goes away, you've still got your infrastructure. Some economic incentive programs require that the business pay upfront, guarantee X number of jobs, et cetera, and then there's a reimbursement. You cannot allow them not to pay property tax. There is a thing on the rebate that statute is. And if we get, you know, something that's fairly large, I'm sure the county economic development's going to want to talk to us about trying to help contribute to any kind of state money that they may be able to eligible to get.
So, quick question for you, sir. I, I support that idea.
Okay.
The budget, we vote on it at the next meeting. You guys have to do your backroom stuff. When can we get a policy or a couple drafts of policies tailored into small and also new business? When can we get that?
We will have, I'm going out on a limb because our attorney is not here.
I'm not going to hold you to it.
I'm thinking, you know, by the end of the fiscal year. I would think we could at least give you something to look at.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep, did we?
I'll make the motion, sir.
Go ahead.
I authorize the transfer of the Economic Development Fund to the fund balance to be used for economic development, which is in the restricted fund.
And that would be for FY twenty-three?
Sorry. Sorry. Let, let me make the motion properly. Sorry. I didn't see the, the other part there. But anyway, I, I, I make a motion to approve the creation of an Economic Development Fund and to authorize the transfer of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the current budget fiscal year twenty-three into the fund, which would be used for economic development related efforts.
All in favor?
Okay.
Unanimous?
Thank you. And again, I do apologize for that error.
Sorry.
All right. I guess we're at project update. Is that right? Anybody been out on First Avenue lately?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I was out there yesterday, I think. And they're working to beat the ban. One of the things, and I think we've told you about it, but we want to tell you again, that they're doing the ditches, and they're going to leave the ditches open because of the lay of the land. Okay? So I just want to remind you about that. We are pushing them to have it completed by mid-June. We are pushing them to have it completed by mid-June. I'm still, would hope that we would do a ribbon cutting, but we shall see how that works. Indian Trail Road, we're still working on that. By the late summer, early fall, we hope to have some design cost on that. I have some strategies on maybe how you want to fund that as we get closer to that date. Shady Bluff is another one, we're still waiting on Duke Energy on pole relocation, and, um, we've talked about Chestnut Square Park Phase Two. At our next meeting, we've got two more scheduled meetings, business meetings scheduled this fiscal year. We're gonna recognize one of two educators, um, the beginning teacher of Indian Trail Elementary. We'll again have the tax and budget amendment reports. Todd will be bringing you a resurfacing contract, we've got three public hearings, and you see that on your memo. ARPA update, Stormwater ARPA funds, adoption of the budget ordinance. The other thing we'll do is, Adam will have a presentation on walkie-talkies. Okay, remember, I brought that up, right? It's in the memo that I sent you this afternoon, and request your approval on that. And then, last but certainly not least, will be your night to make board and committee assignments. They come up, uh, we like to appoint them the first part of June if we can. I think Trina has given you copies that she has, and so that will give you, once you make that, that'll give us a couple of weeks to notify everybody and get them on board. And, Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you for listening to us tonight, and that is all that I have.
Thank you very much, Mike, and, um, I just sit here and wrote everybody's name down, and I'm gonna let you pick, pretend to comment, just pick Trina and that way. The attorney's not here.
Tom?
I just want to say, great meeting, and God bless everybody, and say your prayers for everyone in this building. God bless you.
I'm also gonna be short and sweet, thank you all for coming out. Again, thank y'all for looking over the budget and really, you know, really taking the time to do that. I've looked over it a hundred times, I know that it can be tedious, so, um, I do appreciate that, and really coming out and telling us, you know, what you really want in the community. So, everybody have a great night and drive safe.
As I mentioned earlier, I spent a little time in the Northeast this past week and a half, and couldn't believe the cost up there to live, unbelievable. And another thing that, um, was shocking, and I'd heard it, you know, in my younger days, about the textile industry uprooting because of the expenses and the unions of the Northeast and moving down here into the Carolinas, and, and I saw these massive brick buildings all over the place around Boston, that they had, they've gone back in, they made condos and, um, you know, retail and that sort of thing, and now we lost, we lost them to a much lower-cost area called the, the Far East, but, um, it's, it just, you, you have to be agile as a town, agile with your economy, and always looking, try to improve what you have and diversify, uh, because if you don't, then you'll, you'll die and you'll wither away. And, uh, they, I don't think the, uh, I mean, I saw mansions in Rhode Island on the coast, and now they've been turned over into, um, uh, I guess more like a Biltmore House, that you can go, uh, see it, uh, the, uh, the money that once was up there. So, um, economically, we always have to be, um, trying to improve and, and try to keep what we have. But, uh, so anyway, I hope everybody has a nice evening, safe going home, and see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. When I, when I, when I came onto this council, one of the things I wanted to do was learn, I'd followed town events, things that happened in the town, whether it's from the political side or just other things going on. And I remember very, I, I had a, I have a very vivid memory of the, um, the, uh, the park, um, bond referendum that was approved. And I've been on council for almost six years now, um, not as long as Mayor Cohen, but, and I know that there were funds approved. When the voters approved the funds, with the, the renderings, the drawings, the descriptions, there were supposed to be softball fields, soccer fields, and baseball fields over at Crooked Creek Park. There's only baseball fields there now, because the land is that we bought at the time now turns out to be in a floodplain. We cannot mitigate that, and therefore we need that. We had a lovely soccer field over here that was, two fields was being used, but then our parks and recs director, who knows his usage, he knows the request, tells us that there's people that live in Indian Trail or organizations based in Indian Trail, they can't even use the fields because of just the volume. And we have that opportunity, and we have money left over, that is the key thing, for about two-point-two million dollars left over, that we cannot spend anywhere else for any other thing than one of these two parks. Can't build anything at Crooked, our only option is Chestnut. And that is, that is why I think it's, it's prudent, which the voters approved of, by the way, to go ahead. We have to change course because of the floodplain, nothing we can do for that. But I just want to remind people, when you come on council, you have to know your history, and you have to carry out the wishes of the people, because that's who we serve in the end. Staff, I want to thank you for your service. I do appreciate all the things that you do. The manager made some recommendations for pay and compensation, and I'm gonna fully for, I'm gonna fully support those. You guys are a great group of people, you do, you prepare us well, you take care of the, the town residents well. Some nights, we, the hall is empty, and it's just you, the, the meeting space is empty, and it's just you here, right? And it's empty because people care about what's going on, but they know that it's in good hands with you and with this board, with this council. So I do appreciate the things that you guys do, and the support that I'm gonna continue to give you, um, tonight and throughout. Mike, good job on the budget, Jim, as always, appreciate the information, the numbers, the questions, and I, I'm, I'm okay with people disagreeing, you have to have disagreements and discussions, it's fine, it's what makes, you know, this union or our search for a more perfect union what it is. Captain Monkey, you and your guys, do appreciate you guys, the work that you do, all right? We do send our prayers for a lot of people, especially those who really need it. I also want to recommend, um, recognize and welcome Caleb, Stephen, Jonathan, Eric, Luigi, Nathaniel, Quashan, Jennifer, and Tabifa to the town. Welcome these employees, hopefully they'll be here for a long time. Everybody else, have a very good evening, safe drive home. Thank you, sir.
And if I'm wrong, let me know, Abby, uh, but it's my understanding it's, uh, Public Works Week, correct? So, like to give a shout out to Public's Works, appreciate you filling these potholes and everything, and keeping the parks looking really good, so, uh, thank you for posting that, uh, you know, so. I thought, I thought I had that right, I was like, nobody mentioned it, so I'm going, maybe I missed it, looked at it the wrong day, but anyway, so, thanks to Public Works for all you do. I'd like to thank Sheriff's Office for the Memorial Day hosting down there, uh, for the fallen officers, it's just a great ceremony, and, and it's great that y'all do that and have the memorial down there. Just want to remind everybody that VFW has bingo every Thursday, it's a big fundraiser for them. First Baptist Church is already taken registration since Pastor Mike was here for Vacation Bible School. My younger kids really loved Vacation Bible School when they went, and I used to teach at Vacation Bible School. So, yeah, it's, you know, years ago. Other than that, I'd like to wish everyone a happy Memorial Day, and thanks to all that gave all. Thank you, have blessed you.
Okay. I'd like to thank everybody who spoke tonight, um, everybody, everybody has a, I can't say it, but everybody has an opinion, and, uh, and, and you deserve to get up to be able to talk, to, to give your opinion. Uh, I'd like to remind everybody that the VFW on Monday, is that eleven o'clock to twelve, is the Memorial Day service that we have there, uh, this Monday. And I'd like to, um, thank all the employees for your hard work in the budget and what you've done, and you've done a lot, and, uh, your hard work, and appreciate you making us look good, uh, making council look good. You, you're always on top of things, and, uh, I appreciate it. Captain Monkey, thank you for all you do, appreciate you and the Sheriff's Department. I'd like to, I was tickled to death that Preacher Mike was here tonight. That was kind of significant, that we've never had a prayer, uh, here before, and that was the first. It, it might be, as my dad would say, the second time, the first and last, but, uh, it was, uh, it was very nice to do that, and no, no more fitting person to do that than, than Preacher Mike and all the things that he's done, uh, for the town. Remind everybody about, uh, Family Fun Day, I can't say enough about it, I hope to see everybody there. It, it's a marvelous day capped off by fireworks, lots of fireworks, so it's a, it's a beautiful family day. With that being said, appreciate everybody coming out, and, uh, can I get a motion close?
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor? Unanimous?